We'd like to start tonight with the pledge allegiance, if you'd join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get the green light. The speakers are on tonight, too. All right, we'll start our...
Mr. Mayor.
The workshop. Councilmember Rainville.
Before we start, I'm wondering, under council items, if we can move item N up to item A or B. We have presenters for both of those two items. But I suppose you're here for the ball team also, right? Okay, so that would be...
Item E.
Yeah, so I'd like to move that A, B, and C. B, we'll do the HVAC, the Heritage Fest, and then the ball team, as we have presenters.
Why don't we do the ball team? I get a pen that works here. The Heritage Fest, and then HVAC.
That's fine. I mean, we have presenters here, so we should give them consideration.
Do you know if we control the speaker volume at all?
I don't know what it sounds like out there, but it sounds pretty loud here. Did you ask for the volume control? I don't know if that's for the speakers or... Sounded like you did something. Yeah, it definitely made a difference.
Let me speak. Is that better?
Unless Lori's doing it back there.
Are we both turning knobs here?
Well, I thought that's what that controlled was this...
I thought it was, too.
The speaker volume back there.
Does that... Can you still hear out of the speakers, but not so loud?
I don't know if I hear anything coming out of the speakers now, but...
Lori, what'd you do? Well, we should be able to hear fine. We'll just have to learn our balance. Those of you watching online, we're still working the bugs out of our news system. All right, so let's go to formerly E. Well, first of all, let's get those and we can back to consent agenda with those issues there. Item E, the ball field. I have a request to use the ball field, and in lieu of payment, the ball team would maintain the facility. And Now Then Knights, Terry Olson. Does the council have questions? Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rickert.
One question I do have is, is... Do you know how many Now Then residents are on the team, if you need?
Two, I believe.
Two?
Two.
Other comments, questions? Did Joe Glaze, maintenance supervisor, did weigh in? He would like to see the grass, he'd like to see the grass kept at two and a half inches?
I... Whatever he has the mower set at is where I mow it at.
Okay. So as long as he's got it set where he wants it, you'll mow it at that?
Yeah, because he... Because I use the hopper mower in the cities.
Yep.
And whatever it's set at, that's where I mow it at. I mow once a week, usually on Wednesdays.
What do you do if it's raining? Just work around it?
Well, I do it the next day.
He would also like to see both sides of the fence being trimmed. He doesn't believe it was being done last year.
No, I didn't have... All I had was an electric weed whacker, and I don't have a mower that long. So I bought a gas one now, so. But normally, they mow on the outside, and they would weed back on the outside, and then I would just do the inside.
Yeah, he's just saying he would like to see both sides this year. If that's the agreement, he'd like to see both sides done. He'd also like to see the batting cage and the pitching cage of Wompa Perry is being mowed.
I mow them at the same time I mow the other ones.
Okay. And he said, please keep the grass out of the lime if they've got to spray or whatever. And he just put down 65 tons of lime last year. Do you know what that would mean?
When I... I don't know how I would not get the grass clippings, because I don't have a bag or a mower, so...
It's not the clippings, it's the grass starts growing in the infield, in the lime. Then they either gotta go up there and till it up or spray it, and Ikey wants you to keep it dry.
Oh, so pull the weeds.
Yeah.
Pull anything that's growing up in the infield.
Oh, okay.
So that would make sense, if they've got to spray or pull or whatever. He just wants to protect the lime that he put down there. So it sounds like he's okay with spraying or pulling, but he just wants the weeds or the whatever grass is coming up in the infield to be removed. All right? And then he has an opinion that he'd like to also see softball on that field, and his comment that he thought there were only two players from Now Then on the team. So that's Joe's comments. Other questions or comments from the...
I got a question for Terry. Have you ever dealt with removable pitching mounts in the past, and how well do them work, are they easier?
No, I never have. See, and that's the one problem with this field, and that's why only older kids can play on it, is because it has a mom, a raised mom. And the bases are set at 90 feet. You can't make them shorter, because there's pegs in the ground that actually stick above the ground. But the softball teams have asked me about playing out in the outfield and stuff. And I... I don't care. It's not my decision.
I think that's one of the things that came up with it. The church uses it on Wednesday nights. Now, that's when you're mowing, but...
Well, they use this one up here.
Yeah, they'd like to use the outfield over there as well, because they have so many kids. So that was one of the requests last year, can they use the outfield out there, so...
Yeah, and I said it wasn't up to me. You just... They can't go on the infield. That's going to be rough.
Well, there's ways, though. There's bases that where the stop is below the surface.
Yeah, but you have steel poles sticking out of the ground.
Right, but you can have some steel poles don't stick up out of the ground.
But these do. That's all I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying. You can get a different kind, so they don't... So if the city wants or the park committee wanted to research that, you could get bases that can be moved in or out, depending upon who's using the field. And then there's also the option of getting a removable pitching mound. And I don't know how well they work. I've never...
I... Yeah, I have no idea.
But it's something that the park committee maybe could do some research and check out. Because it would be nice if them kids, there's so many kids up here, and they're waiting for that field. They have to share one field here, and if they had two, that'd be awesome, if they could play on.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Unless anybody objects, can we move this to the consent agenda?
So what you're saying, for Tuesday's meeting?
Yeah. I guess I wasn't sure. I don't see the point, but...
I understand his point. I've been to some of the other cities, and if they've discussed an item, and there's not a lot of debate or any other follow-up questions, they move them to consent agenda, because it makes the next meeting move faster. But if we think there's more discussion necessary, we wouldn't do that. If we think that the discussion has been sufficient, we can move it to consent agenda. Anybody have any opposition to moving consent for Tuesday?
Will the contract be amended to state items as mentioned tonight before then, or...
Yeah, I think you can get that before Tuesday's meeting, to incorporate the things that Joe put in here.
You guys give me the contract to sign.
Okay, so I'll have Lori or Cory deal with that, so... I guess we do have the contract right here as part of the request.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Some of that, it looks like it's already in the contract. If you look at note number two, letter A, mowing height 21 and 1/2 and 2 and 1/2 inches. B, trimming around both sides of the perimeter fence.
Yeah, so we need to incorporate the, keeping the growth out of the lime and strike the 1 and 1/2 inches to Joe's preferred 2 and 1/2.
Well, it says no shorter than 1 and 1/2, but no longer than 2 and 1/2.
Yeah, Joe wants it no shorter than 2 and 1/2. So what are you saying?
See, I do mow the infield a little bit shorter than the outfield. And I do that with my tractor that I bring out here.
All right, I'll contact Joe just to clarify this, and we'll get it to the staff, and they can come together.
You tend to want the infield shorter than the outfield, right?
So the wall grows faster.
Anything else on that? And council's okay with moving that to consent agenda with the amendments? Joe clarifies. Next item, request donation for Heritage Fest. We have a request here for donation, $2,500 and a wave of facilities. We have a letter attached to the request. Comments from the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I'd like to see, again, I know in years past, we've asked for their taxes, so I think we can continue to ask for that. I'd also like to see, you know, an itemized list of exactly what this event costs the city other than the $2,500 donation. Because there are a lot additional fees, you know, above and beyond that $2,500. There's staff time, and for other projects, we ask for weighted staff time. I think we should show that. The total cost for, you know, the facility use, so you got $2,500, you got staff time, you got facility usage. And then, you know, another thing that we really haven't thought about much in the past was use of fire department staff, you know, as far as fireworks. We charge our residents for fire calls, but yet the city will pay to cover staff during an event like this. It's not a city event, which, in my opinion, I don't agree with. We're going to charge our residents, we should be charging for that. You know, last year, we looked, you know, there's well over 15 hours of staff time for the fire department alone in that event, that the city paid for. Another thing is, is I'd like to make sure that the damage that was done to the park last year is done, and if not, if it's not completed because of the weather now, that there's a game plan in place to make sure that that does happen. Because there was fees associated to that, that the city paid for as well, with black dirt and whatnot, so... Again, it's not just the city donating $2,500 to the event. There's a lot more additional cost involved than just that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton.
Yeah, Councilwoman Rainville, you had mentioned that you guys keep track of all the volunteer hours, and you keep track of all that stuff, or is it possible to get a report of...
Of how many hours?
Well, how many people and how many hours, and then not only that, but the same thing that Paul's asking for, the fire department staff, I mean, the city, the recycling funds donated, the plates and stuff. It'd be nice to see the full cost, what's being donated, so...
Council of Sodaracks, you can provide that. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would just say to the comment on the fire department, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, Paul, but Cory did put those together. And when you said 15, was that the total on her sheet, do you remember? Okay.
I printed off, because I knew this was going to come up. See, fireworks, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, eight hours. First aid for the festival was another six hours. Open house, open house, that's prep, no. First aid for medical for grounds and 5K runs, so the Lions had some there, too. Obviously, there's actually 16, 20 hours, you know, so there's a significant amount of hours that are...
I think originally it was like 88 hours, but I think that must have been open house.
Yep, there's, those hours that I just quoted had nothing to do with the open house that happened that same day.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And the Councilmember Rickert's comment on the damage to the grounds. I think that Mrs. Bealon earlier addressed that issue, that we did come back, we did repair. We did not know there were still issues. We have committed to coming back and repairing. We did not, we were not notified that the staff had expended any dollars towards that, because we could have received that, and we could have taken care of that, so... But we have committed to come back and to repair that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
And, again, I haven't heard from the last conversation where that stands. I just want an update, and again, just want to point out the fact that there was costs associated with that. So if we're looking at everything, I want to look at all costs. And there was some there.
I do want to say, I appreciate, you know, Councilman Benton, you asked about the volunteer hours. I know there's significant volunteer hours there, and I think Now Then's very fortunate. Not only for the Heritage Festival, but, you know, we've got the farmer's market. There's a lot of volunteer work that goes in there throughout the summer. Our Lions group and the, you know, Councilman Benton, you're a Lion, you know how much volunteer time goes into that, and I think our seniors, I think the volunteers that helped put up the rink. I think we want to make sure that we're recognizing the contribution to our city that the volunteers make. And certainly, we want to do everything we can to continue to promote volunteers and make it as easy as possible and rewarding as possible for people to volunteer. Because we do, you know, if we're going to expand what we do in our park system with our rinks and warming houses and things like that, I think it's important, whether it's the festival, the farmer's market, the various Lions events, skating rinks, and other volunteer opportunities that come up. And I think park cleanup and some of those other things where residents participate, we want to make sure it's rewarding for all of them and beneficial to the city. So I think it's certainly reasonable to be accountable for that, you know, if there's city usage involved. But also to make sure in that, that we're always recognizing and thanking the volunteers that are generously giving, because it's, you know, people work all day long. You know, they go in the city and they come back home and contribute to what we're doing to make life better out here. So I think it's extremely important to remember our volunteers and to make it rewarding for all of us. Other comments on the request for the donation?
That's why it'd be nice to have a full report, that here's the dollars that the city's putting toward it, but here's all the volunteers, the volunteer hours that are being put forth toward that event. So, I mean, that is an overall report, and that, yeah, we're spending this money, but look at all the... Look at all the volunteers that are volunteering and hours that are put in to make that an event, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I just, to Councilmember Benton, the recycling dollars. The recommendation to use the recycling dollars came from Councilmember Scheffler. Part of our contract that we sign with the county is that we are to assist, recommend organizations that are having events in the city that they use compostable materials. And so that's why Councilmember Scheffler brought that forward. Half of the cost, at a minimum, the additional product we ordered went to the seniors' building here, and then is also being used by city staff. So not all of those dollars were festival-related. There was discussion, and I'm drawing a blank on the kid's name.
Louis.
Louis, Lewis, said that first 2017, it's very possible that there wouldn't be any expenditure, that there would be enough leftovers from other events, because other events are also using those recycling dollars, that there'd be enough money left at the end of the year, and enough product left, that there wouldn't be any expenses at all. But that's, what it did enable us to do is to adhere to our contract with the county for our recycling project.
No, I'm not saying anything bad about it, but it's still a donation, and it should be on a report.
I'd like to call on Ms. Copeland, as the treasurer. Do you see any problem with the accountability aspect that council's discussing?
I don't have any information, some of the information we don't have. So if we can get that information, we can put it all together.
And so in that, if the council moves that way on Tuesday, then we should include in that to make sure that staff is available to give the Heritage Festival representatives the information, so they can put together a spreadsheet. Any other discussion on that? All right. Saying none, we'll vote on that on Tuesday, then, and there'll be a complete motion at that time as far as direction. So at least you've got an understanding of what the council's looking for. So if you have any questions or comments before Tuesday, make sure you put them in writing, get them to Cory.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if Cory's still sick, get them to Lori. Hopefully, she's better.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think, if we go to the consent agenda, do you guys see any need for Terry to come back?
To bring us cookies.
Cookies, huh? You can drop those off. No, you should, if we go to the consent agenda, you should be... We'll get you a copy, obviously, of the contract, you can see what amendments are there. Thank you. All right. And we will go to the HVAC system. We have a couple of quotes. To me, it's insufficient to drop $8,000 to $12,000 on. There's a number of questions that come to mind when I was looking at this last night. I'm not an HVAC guy, so understanding the difference between two-stage variable speed and single-stage for more money, and two-speed, again, understanding some of the terminology, understanding why we have to have two furnaces and in one proposal, one air conditioner and the other one, two air conditioners. Because of the load-bearing wall, I don't know, if we had a structural engineer look at it, if we couldn't move through the load-bearing wall at a reasonable rate and have one system instead of two. But to me, it seems like this needs more research and an actual recommendation, some explanation of what all these terms mean. I can do the math on an 80% efficient versus a 95% efficient and payback. There are rebates available on the higher efficiency ones, not on the lower efficiency ones. So it does affect the cost, but I don't understand some of what's going on. I don't see anything on thermostats, anything on the additional items that would be necessary to make this functional for us, so... I know that we asked Andy and I think Councilman Bryan to work with Joe on getting quotes in, but I think it needs some actual explanation, what the quotes mean. How do you compare a five-ton on the front page to a two-ton for the kitchen? Do we need two complete systems to eat a building this size? And so I would think we'd be, you know, knock on whatever this is, plastic. They're talking about 40s and 50s for the next couple of weeks. We've got a system that's running. We've got two furnaces right now here that are functioning, anyway. I would like to see this presented more as a project, so we could actually have an apples-to-apples comparison. I know that there's nobody in Now Then that's quoted on this at this point. We do have a couple of HVAC contractors in town that I know of. But I think, asking the basic question, why do we need two? Get that explained to us, and then compare the cost-effectiveness of the recommendations here or with the quotes that we have here, to actually make a recommendation. And I certainly think that Building Inspector Schrader has been tasked with this to some degree. You know, he's on the job for a while yet. I would like to see him head that up as a project and get back to us with an actual presentation, rather than just a couple of quotes here, if the council would be agreeable, something like that. Unless you guys understand this a lot better than I do, and two complete systems makes sense, but...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benton.
Did this originally start out because the chimney's bad, it's cracked, and it really needs a liner or a new flue put down? But the furnaces are operating, working, they're just, the one is really old, but it's still in workable, running condition?
Mayor, if I might, as I understand, part of this conversation started at a meeting that was very cold outside, and it just, you, council was very cold and realized that the system just wasn't adequate. That's, I think, what started this whole conversation, or not?
Well, it didn't start there. It started with an evaluation that we do have a rusted-out flue, and the furnace is sufficiently old and need to be replaced. So it started out with Joe just going out and looking for quotes to replace a furnace. And it was further brought to our attention on that cold meeting.
During that time period.
Because we thought we had to heat up, and it was very cold.
So we realized that they weren't keeping up, so, yeah, as I understand, there was...
And we didn't realize we had two of them at the time. It wasn't, we're incognito, there were two of them, so...
If I might, as you mentioned, this could be approached in a couple of different ways. One of which is, you had two contractors bonded from the state of Minnesota come in here and look at the system, look at the building, and offer what they thought would be two options. One of which was to save a little bit of money at the outset and replace the efficiency similar to what's already here, efficiency similar to what's already here, and then also an option to upgrade to a high-efficiency system. And that's basically what these two companies did. You can also look at it, like you alluded to, as more of a project in the sense that, looking a little bit more as far as the use of the building, the longevity of the building, the benefit of having the downstairs be brought up to a more comfortable temperature, you know, using one system instead, or one furnace instead of two, what the engineering might involve to breach that bearing wall, you know. So there's a lot of inputs to that. And then, as far as the effort to bring all those inputs together and make a more of an educated recommendation to the council, that would be more of a project than just, you know, dialing the phone and getting some contractors in here. So that scope of work or that scope of a project would be, you know, more detailed and more involved than what we've been basically asked to do so far. That's something that we can certainly look at and certainly do, but as you're aware, that being a different scope of services or a different workload, if you will, I'm working right now just to primarily focus on the services of issuing permits and doing inspections. In the last couple of weeks that I'm employed at St. Francis, that's primarily what I'm doing, just to make sure that I don't leave any open ends after I leave St. Francis. So if this is something that council desires, we can certainly look at who's to do it and how it's to be done, but as of right now, like you said, that's all that's in front of you is just the estimates or the quotes from those two companies.
Other comments from the council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to look at it also, you know, it's, to me, putting in two furnaces for the amount of square feet we have here doesn't make sense. You know, the way systems are now, you know, and being able to zone them electronically and put different dampers in and whatnot, you could easily, you know, set up a system where you can have one furnace, structurally, if we can do that.
Right.
Where you could have basically three zones set up and each one of these main areas are on a different zone, controlled by their own thermostat and whatnot. You know, then you've got the one unit rather than two. You know, and I'd like to see, you know, us look at searching down that path first, you know, and, you know, not just jumping, you know, well, this is what we got, this is what we should replace it with.
Yeah, even the thought of two central air conditioners, really in a building this size, that just seemed, it's kind of like, if you're willing to pay for it, well, we'll take your money.
And again, that's why technology and the way HVAC's changed and zoning and whatnot, you know, it's, you know, you can zone, you know, pretty easily now with electronic dampers and...
And again, if I might, I think that's going to take more of an evaluation or more of a design system than what they were asked to do. They essentially did what was asked of them, these contractors. They came and said, this is what's here, you want to replace that, here's what it costs. So again, yeah, you're right in that if we want to take a more detailed approach, that would be more detailed design consideration, right? And then the question, if I might, is to who's to do that work, who's to do that design work? I think it might be difficult to get two or three or multiple contractors to do that same design work with the hope of getting the job, you know, if it's more of a design consideration, like who's going to do the design and then put it out for numbers, that would be different. I don't think that we would be very successful in asking multiple companies to do that same in-depth design for no cost, I guess, is my opinion.
And one of the things we talked about early on was actually coming up with what we thought was the specifications, the requirements that we'd be looking at. We would like to see one system zoned with these features, if they're cost-effective, so that we could put out a desired spec to multiple contractors, saying, if we're going to do this, what would you charge? And obviously, if there's a structural engineer that's required to go through the bearing wall, if that's required, then we'd have to include that in the cost. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Rickert.
You know, and that may be the place to start, because obviously, if anybody's going to look at a single unit to be able to zone it, you're going to have to trunk through that wall. So, you know, before you take the step too far, you know, and say, okay, this is, can somebody design this system to do a single-unit zone, you know, to heat this whole place? And, you know, we need to know if we can go through that wall, because if you can't, I don't think there's any way they can, you know, get the duck work appropriately, you know, inwardly needed.
And if I might, I think that's exactly the challenge, is John Nordrum from Hidden Acres Heating and Cooling, he's with the firm that did the, replaced the air exchanger over at the city offices on 199th. He's the one that initially brought up that challenge is to say, if you did want one unit, the challenges that you're likely to encounter are going through that bearing wall in order to zone it and damper it correctly. And nobody has so far taken the step to say, well, engineering is likely to cost X number of dollars, you know, the design of that intricate of a system is likely to cost so much money, you know, basically so far it was, you know, just quick and dirty. Here's what's there, here's what it is to replace it, and that's the extent of the design that's been done so far. So I guess my question still remains is that if the council wants to go down that road, then who would you like to propose to do that actual design work? That's the first step, like you say.
I guess the first step is to say, can we go through the bearing wall?
Yep. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayville.
Can you explain to me which wall is the load-bearing wall?
There's a wall downstairs. We could take a tour sometime if you'd like to look at it, but where that chimney is, and there's a couple of challenges with that, one of which I'm questioning whether that chimney is lined either. It very, if it is lined, I'm concerned about the integrity of that liner. When you take the products of combustion from a furnace and you put it into a clay or a brick chimney, there's a lot of corrosive actions that can happen between the brick and the flue gases itself. And that's the area of the wall between the two furnaces. There's a furnace here and here, and the wall in between those, as I understand, I wasn't here when John was here that day, and I haven't taken that close of a look at it myself either. So that's the wall that we're anticipating, is he was referring to.
Okay, so, Mr. Schrader, is this wall in the old section or the new section, or is it the common wall between the two?
I believe it's the, sorry to interrupt, it's the common wall in between those two, right, when the senior center, when that wing was added on.
All right. So is a load-bearing wall, is it, is it headered? Is it a concrete wall? What is holding that, what is the, what item is the load-bearing, and I'm not saying it right, but is it a header that's holding it all up, or is it a concrete wall that's holding it all?
As I understand, again, I have to take a closer look at it, but it's essentially that was an exterior wall.
Mm-hmm.
And then the additional was right next to it, so that would have been the bearing wall of the exterior wall of the existing structure.
Okay, so would it be any different than if you were putting a new window in a basement that you would header that out and instead of the window going in there, your duck work would come through it?
The concept, the general concept is the same, but the type of construction of this building is different than your typical single-family home, wood construction, where this is masonry, and judging on the age of the building, that would take a little bit more in-depth, a deeper look at that, you know. So in order to get started down that road, you know, first of all, who's going to do the project management side of things? Who's going to contact the engineer? In order to start to put some value, some dollar values to this would be helpful, but then also the design of the HVAC, if there's, how to get started with this project, and you've been very helpful so far, is just getting a better idea of what's the outcome, if you want to start looking at more of an in-depth design versus just a replacement of what's here. I've also heard, you know, a possible desire to try to include more local contractors in this, you know, so then how do we go about locating them as far as getting them to give some input to this? So there's a few moving parts to this, outside of the scope of currently what I'm doing for the city, which is to respond to permits, do inspections, and document management.
Councilmember Rayville.
To Building Official Schrader, do you have the expertise to do the design?
I'm not an HVAC contractor. You would need, and I'm not, I'm going to stop short of saying an actual HVAC contractor, but somebody, certainly somebody that's worked in the field more than I have. I would say either one of these firms would be qualified to do that design. I certainly can help put the pieces together, you know, look at the engineering. I do have a lot of contacts from engineering as well as the HVAC contractors. If you wanted to find some local, we could find that as well. You know, as far as pulling all the pieces together, I can certainly accomplish that, but as far as designing the system and determining the dampers in the square foot, doing the actual energy calculations, no.
Okay.
I think the question is more the coordination of the activities, pulling the pieces together. I wouldn't expect your expertise to match a professional HVAC person. The actual design, if from the building standpoint, we can determine that there is a way through the wall and one system is a feasible thing, and as you say, if you have contacts with engineers, that question would be asked first. Is this wall able to be penetrated in a cost-effective way? Then we could go to HVAC people and say, design me a single system that's zoned to manage this building. Single system, single HVAC, single furnace with the appropriate controls. And if a person such as yourself could coordinate that, I think that's what we really need is a point person, not a, not a system designer. That's what the professional HVAC people do, but somebody would say that does make sense. And the engineering side of it and the construction side of it is a reasonable expense for the city, or you're better off paying for two systems and just maintain two systems.
Mayor, if I might, I think that's a good approach, is to say, first of all, get an engineer, expend a small amount of money just to say, you know, if this, what would be the possible challenges to going through this wall? And then if that's not too ugly, if that's not too much of a challenge, then you could go down the road of maybe expending or budgeting a certain amount of money to have a design done from an independent person. And then from there, you would take that design and have quotes based on that scenario. That would be a good approach.
It seemed, you know, we anticipate this building being here for a while. The county's not going to widen their own anytime soon that you know of, Councilman Bettinger, so. We're anticipating this being our public facility for a multitude of uses for time to come, so it seems to say we should have a cost-effective, long-term result when we're done, so.
I, in my opinion, I guess if we just had a rough idea of what it's going to cost to take that wall out, that bearing wall out to get a one furnace system in here, I mean, is it, is it going to cost?
Where's the second furnace?
I know there is, but if we want to go down...
Where is it?
It's in the new addition, just another set of walls.
So there's a basement under that as well?
Yeah. So, you know, if it's going to cost a lot to have that bearing wall reworked to get a one furnace system in there, then we might be just better off replacing the one furnace that needs to be replaced.
I think that really is the first question, what's it going to take to penetrate that wall?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayville.
And also, in looking at what it would take us to do that, the cost involved, we're also looking at, it's the basement. It's not our, our main meeting room. It is used, it may be used more in the future, but it is the basement. And so there could be a way of doing it that would be sufficient in order not to take out, you know, to be able to go through that load-bearing wall. But I don't want to say it may not look real pretty, but you know what I mean. I just remember in...
It's ductwork in the back room that most of us don't even know is there.
Yeah. I mean, I remember in our, our house growing up, my father, as the family got larger, made changes to the furnace and put in ductwork in the basement. You know, and our ductwork didn't go just straight across. It went down around pipes and because he wasn't going to move the pipes that were there for the water or the electrical. So I mean, again, it's a base, we want it to look nice, but it's a basement, and so it doesn't have to be pristine. But if we can find out that it is less expensive for us to do that load, go through the load-bearing wall and have a product that will take care of the whole building rather than the expensive two, I think that's a smart idea.
Other comments from the council? Is there a consensus at this point that it makes sense to at least get the initial cost understood, that what it would take to go through that wall and then come up with the next step decision?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rickert.
The only thing there is, obviously, we've got a task, who's going to do that? Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan.
Yeah, that was my question. Who's the right person to handle that project?
I think the first step, it would make sense to see if Building Inspector Schrader could at least coordinate the initial step, get us that feedback. Obviously, he's used to working with engineers and inspections. We could have this articulated to us, what we're facing and a realistic cost. I wouldn't mind being part of that with him. I can run up from work if, just to make sure that we're getting the questions asked when the person's here, rather than calling back, again, we have a few more questions, you know, if another council member would like to participate. But I think doing something quickly so that we can make some decisions here would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger.
How's it going to work with, in about two weeks? Andy's going to be done being the building official for the city of St. Francis, so.
He's got to get this done first.
And get it to the council to...
Well, you know, I don't know that the final recommendation would be to the council in that time, but certainly if it can be something where, again, I think it's a call to an engineer at this point.
Mayor, if I might, I could certainly, between now and maybe even the council meeting and certainly before I leave, is to outline the steps that you, that the council has identified, as far as who to contact, what steps to take before making that final decision. I've been taking notes here and I have a clear understanding of what you guys would like to see happen. So if you'd like, I can certainly just kind of bring this all together and represent it to you, make sure that that reflects what your desires are, and then whether it be me or somebody else can pick it up from there. Fair enough?
Makes sense to me. Counsel?
Yep.
All right. I see a lot of nodding heads, so, and they're going up and down, not side to side, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Since we're on the, we'll make you number D as well, resignation of building official. Now I've got to shuffle my papers. We received a letter dated Monday. Mr. Schrader, would you care to walk us through the scenarios this week and summarize your letter for us?
Certainly, thank you. The purpose of the letter was just basically to introduce to you the fact that I do have a contract business. I've been in business since 2009, primarily doing advising, consultant work, and also education with licensed contractors. My decision to leave the city of St. Francis was basically with the goal of expanding my business. I do, again, a fair amount of contractor education, and I really like the teaching aspect of my job, very much so, in fact, to the point where I wanted to expand that consultant role. And it would allow me a lot more free time in order to choose which endeavor I choose to go after. That's the purpose of that. And I wanted to communicate to the council that I could envision Now Then as a contract piece of that. As you're aware, I've been here for over approximately five years as your designated building official, as a subcontractor from the city of St. Francis. I don't know if St. Francis administration or elected officials have been in contact with you yet, but I don't know that it's their desire to continue that relationship or not. So Now Then, counsel, you're going to, you know, be put in a place to make a decision here eventually as far as how to perform the designated building official role. And I just wanted to express interest to you as far as communicating a potential contract for that.
To my knowledge, Lori, you can correct me, but when I last talked to Cory, we have not been contacted by St. Francis.
Not that I know of.
St. Francis has accepted your resignation on consent motion?
They have. I asked for a three-week notice. Instead of just a standard two, I wanted to make sure that we were able to tie up any loose ends. There's a few projects, wastewater treatment plant, some town homes, and a number of single-family homes over there. I wanted to make sure that the community development director, as well as the city administrator, were up to speed with the status of these different projects. So the 24th of this month will actually be my last day at St. Francis.
And in talking with Cory, our contract with St. Francis has a 60-day notice?
That's my understanding as well.
So they're obligated, short of mutual agreement... So they're obligated, short of mutual agreement, their obligation is to cover us with whatever they're doing to cover you. So in your absence, they have to have something and they're obligated to cover us for at least 60 days.
Correct.
So there is some expectation and my understanding is the council will be taking up this matter at their next meeting?
There is a work session on this next Monday where Joe Coleman, the city administrator, intends to talk to the council about the potential options. Since Mr. Coleman became city administrator approximately two years ago, he questioned a number of times the relationship as far as what's the value to St. Francis. And I don't know that that arrangement necessarily would have happened under his administration. As you recall, this relationship was started under a different council, different mayor, and different administration. So I don't know that the current council and administration necessarily would have the desire to continue that, but you'd have to get that from them. That's just the indication I've gotten so far.
But at this point, we are under contract for coverage with a 60-day notice.
That is correct. And that agreement is to include commercial, septic, as well as residential. And then the code enforcement as needed. Liz is primarily the point person for code enforcement, but we would take care of any site inspections or assistance that she would desire for that. So I don't believe St. Francis has made any decisions yet in order to determine how they're going to fill the septic or the designated building official role after I leave.
Council questions?
Does Scott property, has anything changed on that or is there any update on that or?
Thank you for asking. There is an update in the letter or in the code enforcement update. I did speak with Mr. Scott, asking for a site inspection, basically, because he had informed me a couple of weeks ago that the siding had been completed on the detached accessory buildings. I called him just asking for a site inspection to have a record in the file that we had been out there, but he communicated to me that his wife had recently had some medical issues and I believe surgery was involved. And he said now was just not a good time. He was very pleasant about it. He said that building has been cited and he would contact me as soon as they were basically up for company or up for a visit. That's the way we left that.
Other questions? Mr. Schrader?
Or Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Rick. You know, obviously now that we're aware of this, do we want to have staff contact St. Francis and ask them, you know, what's their plans moving forward so we know, you know, what's covered and what, you know, say if a septic issue comes up or, you know, technically they don't have anybody-
Correct.
-after your last day, you know? So does that have any weight at all on, you know, the contract and the talks as far as where we want to go with that?
And my understanding is when, after the 24th, if they don't have somebody else, then your license isn't there to cover Phil.
That's correct.
Without your license, they have nothing short of-
As I understand the statute, there is a period of time that, during a transition period, I'm not sure exactly that length of time, but they are still responsible to maintain compliance with the, you know, with statutory regulations as far as septic's, commercial, and everything else.
Are there people available at the state level to fill in in that type of situation? They've got to have something.
Theoretically, there are, but let's remember the state of the economy. Things are starting to really move as far as building construction and everybody's in short supply, plumbers, electricians, carpenters, as well as inspectors. There's a lot of work out there. And after the slowdown of 2007, 2008, a lot of people left the trades. So it's going to be, it's a market for those that want to do the work, that's for sure. There's a lot of voids out there. So I'm not sure exactly what their intentions are. You'd have to maybe visit with Joe, but again, they are planning on talking about this, last I heard, at their workshop agenda on Monday. So perhaps after Monday, they might have more direction for you as far as what their intentions are.
Yeah, I would say it'd be a good idea to have Cory call on Tuesday and say, "What did you guys decide?" Cory did discuss, yeah, there are some options, West Metro, I understand they're for sale.
That's, I have heard that as well.
And then, who's the other one? The owner is not doing well.
Ron Wosman from Inspectron, is that who you're referring to?
Yes.
I've understood, yeah, I hear he has some medical challenges as well. There's a couple of other contract firms out there and now mine's one of them as well.
And right now, Old Grove is using East Bethel?
Correct. I believe East Bethel also covers Bethel.
So something to think about, but we can have Cory, you know.
One other thing, if I might, Mayor and council, is that if the city gets in a pinch where there's not the response that you need from St. Francis, I'd absolutely be willing to come in here on an interim basis. Until the time that the city decides what route you want to go, I really don't want to see things be left hanging like that. I gave St. Francis plenty of notice that they can do their thing as far as getting somebody to replace me there. But if you get into a pinch here, please let me know. I'd be more than happy to fill in, at least until you get something figured out.
All right.
Would you be willing to put together a proposal on what that would entail as far as cost hourly or?
I would. I have a proposal already generated. I want to make sure it goes through my legal advice, just to make sure that that contract is what I want it to look like. And I would be more, very interested in providing that to you as well.
Councilmember Bettinger, are you talking about in the interim, a proposal for the interim, if that-
If need be.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rick.
I'm not sure how it relates to the contract with, obviously, St. Francis, but I wouldn't mind seeing a proposal moving forward down the road, too. You know, I'd like to see, you know, fees that we're paying through St. Francis right now and then based on a new proposal, you know, where we're at.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing because if it's not St. Francis, we're going to have to find something either internally, which, again, could be challenging if, like you're saying, people aren't in the business anymore. But if we were going to look at another contractor like West Metro or another city, we should be able to compare costs and so a proposal would be good, so.
One other aspect of this, just to inform you as well, in addition to the contract services, I could also put together whatever you're looking for as far as managing this project. You know, if something comes up along these lines, connecting the dots between an engineer, getting an HVAC designed on a project manager basis, I would also be able to provide that service for you as well if you so choose.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Schrader. All right, let's get that one done. So I can keep myself straight. Can we talk about, quickly, about the property adjacent to East Twin Lake Parks?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ryan?
Is there any value to that property for us, where it would potentially be worth us paying the legal fees? I just don't know.
To my knowledge, no. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Rick.
I guess, in my opinion, the only value maybe is if we're forced to find, you know, that amount of parkland somewhere else.
You know, and that's one of those that, the, the deal was made with the county. I mean, that deal with the landowner went through back when Ron, what's, what was the family that had the farmhouse there with the golf course, Disc Golf is now? Anyway, when the county put the park in, they didn't have access to the south. And so they made the deal going down through here. So the county made that deal when they set up the park. And the, my understanding with the DNR grant that we got wasn't for that portion of the park. So I don't know how we could be tied back into a mistake the county made and failed the property document and then came back and based on their understanding of it, gave the guy the right to sell the land, to include the land with his property. As I understand it from the letter from the attorney, if we were to take it on ourselves and just fight him, it could be $10,000 and the insurance wouldn't cover that. If the county were to try and come back to us afterwards, we could have insurance coverage to make that fight. But I just don't understand how the county could come back to us at that point and say somehow the mistake they made is going to penalize us. It gets worse, I think, because I think he sold that property once he got the paperwork from the county. Because he was moving up north at the time he came to us, he was looking to sell and somebody who had inquired about it years before showed up. And I think that property might have been sold, so we could have two fights on our hands at that point, so. I think the likelihood of DNR coming back and requiring additional land, I would throw that back at the county. To me, it almost seems like what sleeping dogs lie.
Well, and I guess that's my point, you know, again, referencing the letter from the attorney, you know, he didn't know how it would impact and he didn't have an opinion on that. And he's thought the same thing, you know, how could they, but we don't know if it's DNR. But, you know, there's two avenues to look at it. Do you contact the DNR and say, "Hey, this is what happened," and then, or just not say anything and?
What sleeping dogs lie. You know, again, I think his last line there, you know, "We use the DNR money in good faith for park improvement purposes and nothing related to that portion of the park."
Yeah.
It wasn't contingent on the size of the land, it wasn't contingent on, you know, if we built a playground on there and we're giving back a playground, I could see there might be more of a contest, but. My recommendation was we just let it go and if the DNR comes knocking later, take it up at that point. If the DNR has nothing more better to do than that, I'd be surprised, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
If the council agrees that this is something we will just not address, can we then move it to consent agenda and just approve it all?
I think it'd be better to just move it from the agenda altogether.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, because we're not making, we're not taking any action.
That's true.
So we'll move that one from the agenda and communicate to Cory that we're just not going to do anything.
Mr. Mayor?
Receive and file.
Councilmember, or Inspector Schrader?
Do you anticipate needing me for any more of the agenda item? If you do, I'm certainly able to stay.
Maybe the next one?
Which one?
Temporary habitation.
Oh, yes. Let's do that one next, item D. You have the Sirdals.
I didn't mean to go that way, but thank you.
The question I have is, you know, I've seen a lot of activity there late summer and, well, at the fall. Have they even started a house?
They have. They've made substantial progress. He had some run-ins with weather as well as carpenter availability. I'm not sure the exact line of it or logistics, but I think he had two crews bail on him, basically, that were not able to fulfill their original agreement. He's well underway now. The structure is up. I believe the roof is complete, so it's dried in. There were some challenges with the septic system. The design came back, that the tanks actually encroached in that setback from the lake, so we had to back up two steps, actually, in order to find a new placement for the tanks. But those are in, so we're well on our way. Doug has been, Mr. Sirdal has been very responsive to all of our requests. He's been fantastic to work with, actually. So they are making progress. They had a few hurdles with the weather and with contractors, but he's doing well now.
So would your recommendation be with what you're seeing on site, to give them six months and we should be fine?
It would, and I don't think it'll take near that six-month mark.
Okay. And I would recommend, if the council, does the council have any questions on that? If the council doesn't have any questions, we move that also to the consent agenda then, if we can avoid having to discuss it again. And so let's see, this came from Cory and it's actually, because City Council considered a preliminary request, so the request is there, so it's appropriate to move to consent. All right, anything else for Mr. Schrader? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You got a couple of things you can shoot our way next week? That'd be appreciated.
I do. Would you like that just to run through Cory or would you like me to email? Excuse me.
Run through Cory.
Okay. I will do that.
And obviously, if for any reason she's not here, make sure Laurie knows.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's just keep going down the list here. Request for council action, audio and videotaping of all city council commission and committee meeting workshops. Committee meetings and workshops.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I submitted that, of course, I can't find it in the packet right now because I've got everything all. Yeah, and as the request for council action states, we now have the technology available to us, so I recommend that council commission, all council commission and committee meetings be audiotaped and videotaped for placement on YouTube. Source of funding would be current and budgeted wages. And then we would direct staff report back at the March 9th and 14th council workshop and meeting with a procedure as to how the meetings, the additional, we already tape ours, but how the park and rec planning, zoning, and road and bridge meetings would be taped.
Questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rick.
I guess, it's always been understood, I guess, from my perspective at least, that all meetings were going to be recorded. So that, I didn't think was new, but is the need for a procedure or is it more of a training thing? You know, figure out who we need to train to do it? Because obviously Laurie will be at, you know, planning and zoning, she'll be at the parks, Cory here, it's basically just training somebody to do road and bridge. So that's why I just question, do we need to, actually need a procedure or just need to figure out who we need to train for road and bridge?
I think two things. Obviously Laurie's set up tonight, so you have some idea? You've been trained?
No, tonight was my first time.
Okay. The question came up, as I understood it, is, I believe, like you said, Paul, that we always expected all the meetings to be videotaped. And I think when it came up at the road and bridge, Dan was told otherwise, that we're not going to do committees.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Rick. Yeah, I asked specifically about the road and bridge and was told that we don't record those.
No, that's, we've discussed all along that every meeting was going to be done.
So if we want to clarify this, I think, first of all, that the council is in agreement that all meetings should be recorded. And then secondly, that the staff should figure out how that's going to be done. And it's, like you say, it should be pretty obvious. If Laurie's already at two of the meetings and Cory's at one, the only one left is the road and bridge, and so we just have to figure out how that's going to be done. And then the rest of it, once it's recorded, the uploading is standard procedure. So if you want to amend your request to just say, for consensus, that the council says all meetings will be recorded and that the staff put in place what it's going to take to get them recorded and get them online.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger?
If we're going to record all the meetings and most of them, I'm not worried about the road and bridge, and so we just have to figure out how that's going to be done. road and bridge sometimes, their language gets a little rough and there could be some issues based on some of the statements that are made.
I, you know, I remember last summer when you kind of warned them, we're going to eventually be recording here, so be careful. And in the last couple of meetings I've been to, I think they've been pretty good. I think certainly, when they see the blue light on, they can, they'll probably be on better manners.
I hope so, it just could be a liability issue, you know what I'm saying? That's the only thing that worries me is...
So that'd be the liaison to have the button.
Maybe we'll have to put up a policy statement underneath, on their agendas, that when they open up, you're being recorded too, so please.
Mr. Mayor.
Probably be good, especially, you know, we were all involved in getting this set up, but for all the committees and commissions, to make that a policy statement, and please remember that you're being recorded for the public now, so... Councilmember Rainville.
I, to Councilmember Bettinger's point, I understand your concern, but we also ask our committee members to be respectful and responsible, and I guess if they don't feel that they can be respectful and responsible, then they need to resign. But I think with just a couple of warnings, or not warnings, reminders, yes, reminders, that we'll be fine. And if we find that there are issues, then we would need to address them, but I think with reminders, we'll be fine.
We could, you know, for those of you that are old enough, we could put a little poster on the back, smile, you're on candid camera.
That's before my time.
I can believe it for Paul, but, and I know it for Dan, he's going, what are you talking about?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
And nothing surprises people anymore, because it's all on the internet.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I will reword my request for council action and submit that to Cory, so it'll be updated.
All right, any other questions on that? All right. Amend now then city council policy, 1113, this would be Councilmember Bryan.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. At the last council meeting, it was requested that I bring back the actual wording of the state statute. I also took the opportunity to ask the lead their opinion regarding minutes for meetings, and that's their, they've sent me a reference to a statement of position by the state auditor and noting, that's the very last sentence stating that audio or video recordings in meetings are not considered meeting minutes, nor are a substitute for them. It did come up at the last road and bridge meeting where a comment was made by our maintenance supervisor that, well, I talked about that at the budget meeting, but, you know, there's no recording or minutes from that time, so there's no record of anything posted. So I, you know, want to bring it back again, that we should be recording minutes for all meetings, including workshops, budget, and budget planning meetings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
So are we going to require Cory to, kind of like the regular council meetings, pretty much word for word, everything that's said and discussed to be in the minutes? Because if we start doing that, I think about, it takes about two to two and a half hours of doing minutes for every hour of meeting, so if we start doing that with every meeting, I mean, we're going to end up adding more staff on to get the work done. I mean, that takes a lot of staff time, our meetings are four, five, six hours long sometimes, and that's a lot of hours for staff to do the minutes, and then that's also a cost to the taxpayers. I mean, we're going way beyond what's required by state statute, putting in our minutes, and I don't believe that we need to do that with all our minutes.
Well, I know the statute talks about...
Councilmember Bryan.
I know, sorry, I know the statute talks about summaries and minutes posted, and I just know that we haven't even seen that coming out of those meetings. If there does become a legal issue, I'd be worried that we don't have meeting minutes documented for whatever meeting where it's needed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if you look at the state of Minnesota that Councilman Bryan, you know, put with his packet, it states right in here, you know, included as a minimum, subject to matter of motion. Make second thing of the motion, voting on the motion, you look at the email from Attorney Rupe that Cory forwarded us back on January 12th. We are doing what state statute requires, and we are required by state statute to put in meeting minutes, as a minimum, only the motions, only the votes on the motions. We are not required by state statute to give all the detail in the meeting minutes that we do. All we are required is by whenever the council takes action and makes motion. And that's the opinion of our attorney, and that's also based on, you know, the documentation that you supplied tonight. So again, I think we are, it's quite obvious, we are doing what we are required by state statute, so I'm not at all concerned about legal issues from that aspect. I'm going to respect the opinion of our city attorney. Secondly, I do agree with Councilman Bettinger, that if we are going to require, you know, realistically, the only meeting we're talking about is the workshop, and I know the documentation that you showed tonight that says videotaping doesn't constitute that, but again, it's, we're not making motions tonight. You know, if that's, the amount of staff time that would require to do that, in my opinion, I would rather just cancel workshops and do everything at the council meeting. What's the difference? We're not taking the staff time, we're taking our one night, now that we moved the meeting back to seven o'clock anyways, take one night of the week and hammer everything out that one night, and then Cory has to worry about one meeting minute.
Looking through this, so this first page, 412.191, what is that from? Is that statute?
Yes.
Okay, so on statute and, and summary, 331A01 subdivision 10. Summary means an accurate and intelligible abstract or synopsis of the essential elements of the proceedings and in those ordinance, resolutions, financial statements, and other official actions. So I think, I think a summary is a reasonable thing, looking at the next page, one, page two, it starts with, beyond the statutory requirements, the decision regarding how elaborate or extensive the minutes should be is within the governing body's discretion. The amount of detail which is appropriate, it goes on, so minutes should not be cluttered with unnecessary detail that could hamper efforts to review or otherwise use the minutes at later date. In addition, minutes should never reflect the clerk or secretary's opinion on anything said or done. It's wise to include governing body, include minutes in the minutes, information if addition, in addition to what's required to satisfy minimum statutory requirements. So I think at least to say, here's the meeting that was held, here's who was there, here's the agenda, and then anything that would be germane to explaining to people sufficient detail, so do we want to, definitely, they say in here, you're not, you don't want to go word for word on what, you know, you're typing out like a legal case in the court, but I think saying that there was extensive discussion on this and people vote on it at the following meeting, or whatever it is, I think a summary is reasonable. Certainly, because we aren't voting on specific motions, we don't have to have the detail that the other ones would have, but at least to say, here's the things it covered, because in a case here tonight, you can see the agenda where we covered things that we either jettisoned, like the land deal, or moved to consensus, so there was, there was evidence, we discussed it in detail tonight, and moved it to consensus. So summary to me would be, council discussed in detail, agenda item, whatever it is, and consensus was to move it to the consent agenda at the council meeting. No more detail than that, but at least there's some evidence, we talked about it before just moving it to consent agenda, or dismissing it, or tabling it, or whatever, so it would seem to make sense to, we already do minutes for everything except for the workshop and the budget meetings. So if we could, if we could come to an agreement on what a summary was and have it minimized, you know, then somebody who's looking at it, they get a copy of the minutes and they say, I want to see that discussion where they discussed it, and then got rid of it, then go back to the YouTube and check it out in detail. But short of that, right now, all you could do is sit through an hour or three of YouTube and hunt for something, so. It seems reasonable to me, if we can come up to a reasonable summary that the staff can handle, and it's enough information that it's useful to the residents, and it's not so insufficient that it's the way he's doing it, but not so detailed that it's impossible to keep up with. But like I say, for a meeting like tonight, where we decide to jettison something, or change its location, or change its text, it would be good to have a summary, and then people can go and get detail off the video.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert. Since I've been on the council, we've never jumped something from council items up to consent agenda before, so that's something new, so that's neither here nor there. It's, again, we have a short staff who's, you know, a small staff who's pretty burdened out, you know, how much additional time are we going to require for them to come up with a summary of what we discussed, you know, for the workshop? And again, by state statute, again, based on what I'm reading here, supplied and the recommendation of our city attorney, we are meeting state statute. I agree, let's, you know, it'd be nice to have things, you know, discussed and what our motion was and whatnot, so again, why have the workshop? Why not have them on meeting? What's the point of the workshop?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
As it currently stands, we have a workshop and a regular council meeting, and the workshop would be considered a regular meeting, therefore by statute, we need to at least provide a summary of some sort of notes. If there is some indication that the staff has, is too much or not enough time to provide minutes or a summary of minutes, Mr. Councilmember Rickert, is there evidence of that? I have not seen nor heard of any of that.
Councilman Bryan, we have continual complaints about staff not getting, being able to get current meeting minutes on the website now. You're going to add an additional X amount of hours to go. We've had workshops go for five, six hours. If you're, if you use Randy's figures and if you say they're right, you go two and a half hours of deciphering through those meeting tapes to compose the minutes, you know, you're, you know, excessive, you know, almost a couple of days, a day and a half. But yet, we have continued complaints that staff isn't getting the minutes up on the website now. So yes, there is evidence of it. And again, the only reason we have the workshop is to discuss, be able to discuss some of these things prior to the council, so that some of the legwork is already done, but if we're going to create additional work for staff, why not just do everything one night? And then everything's done and covered. And again, per advised by our attorney, minimum requirement by state statute, the only minutes you have to post is things you take action on.
Mr. Mayor.
These are, those are the recommendations, but again, right here, right there.
Councilmember Rainville.
So Councilmember Rickert, there is a minimum, we have to meet that minimum. That does not mean, though, as a body, we can't ask for additional, you know, there could have been a minimum of three coats of sealer on this floor, but you have the right to ask for four or five, as long as you're meeting the minimum. I believe that for residents, they would like to see what we've discussed, it allows them to look at it, go back to YouTube, people don't always have time to watch a full YouTube, but it does give them the ability to do that. Cory does take minutes, transcribes minutes as we're meeting, same as Lori is doing right now, and I believe that unless I hear Cory say, there isn't another moment in the day to do this, then I'm in support of having us transcribe the workshop meeting minutes, which, it is a council meeting, and maybe, maybe we go to, instead of having a workshop, we have two council meetings, and then that's kind of takes away the issue of, well, it's just a workshop, because technically, a workshop is a council meeting, so if we wanted to, we could vote on everything here today. It's a council meeting. It's been noticed as a meeting, it says workshop, but it is a meeting, it's a council meeting, so we could vote on everything here today.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Which I agree, we could, but we have chosen not to do it that way. And we do also have the option to go back to a single council meeting where we cover everything on one meeting, so we don't have to have two meetings, there's nothing anywhere that states we have to have two meetings. Number two, at one of our last meetings, Cory did tell us all that when she does take the notes for the workshop, she does not do them in the same fashion she does for the council. So then, obviously, she's going to have to change the way she does things, and I'm going to rely more on what she tells us and what it takes to transpose those meeting minutes from what she types and what she does during, and then going through the tapes than any one of us, because she's the one who does it.
Mr. Mayor.
And again, I just, and I'm not sure this, what you, what you meant, you said transcribe, and I don't think we're looking at transcription, we'd simply be looking at a summary. You know, and I think it's, because the format we've chosen is to have this meeting be a workshop where there's more discussion, where there's more opportunity to involve residents at times, and we tend to be a little different structure here, and we're not voting at this point. The intention was to summarize what we do here, so people at least know how we got to decisions, so the Tuesday meetings are quicker. If we've done a good job here, we have enough information to vote on Tuesday, or we've asked staff to give us some more information by Tuesday, so we have enough information to vote. If we don't have enough information to vote, we should be saying at this point, like the heating, and we need to table that until we get more information. So the point of this was, do we have enough information that we think we can vote on Tuesday? If not, do we need more information, or can we not get it by Tuesday, we'll table it? It should expedite the Tuesday meeting, but it's important that people understand, at least in summary form, that we did have some discussion. And I'm not, I'm not for going into great detail that Councilmember so-and-so's opinion was this, and Councilmember so-and-so's opinion was opposite that, and the mayor weighed in on this. I think it can be sufficient to say, here's the agenda items, here's the amount of time that was spent on it, and here's what was moved forward to the council meeting, or it wasn't. But, you know, again, that's, I think it's reasonable to work with staff and see what that would take. And if, you know, obviously, the intention is not to make it so burdensome that we can't keep up with.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
To me, the workshop should be a fact-finding meeting, is all it should be. We shouldn't even have a lot of detailed discussions here, other than if you need more facts to make your decision on Tuesday night. That's, really, that's all we should be doing here tonight. And I agree, we do have a lot of discussion here, we're almost kind of making decisions here tonight, and we're not supposed to be at this point. And Cory did say that when she, at these minutes or meetings, she just takes notes for herself, so there's items that she needs to address for us, or get us more information by Tuesday, that's what she's typically doing. And I hear you saying, summarize these minutes, you know, yeah, you could say that, but how many times in our regular minutes have we, has Cory been questioned, oh, I want more this in there, I want that, and I want more information in there, I could see that just growing in the future again, so, you know, we should just keep these a fact-finding meeting, if not, if we're going to, if we're going to continue to have these long lengthy discussions, I would just assume... going to continue to have these long, lengthy discussions, I would just assume make it the two regular council meetings, and, and we'd save the citizens some time, some of these people that come, instead of coming to two meetings, they come to one then. Let's, you know, it's on agenda, let's, let's discuss it, deal with it, be done with it. And, uh, I think, you know, and we can do that on a Tuesday, the second Tuesday, and if, if we get everything done in one night, we could cancel it, we could have the second meeting if needed on Thursday night, and if we get everything done on Tuesday night, we cancel the Thursday meeting.
Hey. Councilmember Rickert.
Yeah. Kind of going along with your comment, I would, before we vote on anything, I would like to find out exactly what burden it does put on staff, how they would have to change, you know, the way they do things, how much time it does take them, you know, or would take them. But again, you know, per the request of council action, I think is incorrect, because it does state that we're not meeting the state statute, which we are.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Councilmember Rickert, I think we can, there's some disagreement about if we are or aren't, because this is a regular meeting and there is no summary of this meeting. There, there are certain meetings where there are not summary minutes available.
Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm going to rely on the, the advice of-
Are you done, Mr. Brian?
Yes. The advice of our attorney over our council member, so.
Well, and I, I will say, I'll go back to what it says on page two there, that I noted here, was, decisions regarding how elaborate and extensive minutes should be, is within the governing body's discretion. So, so yes, I, I know the attorney is saying, you know, this is the, um, minimum requirements, and it certainly says that in this document from the state auditor as well, here's the minimum requirements. But it is this body's discretion as to say how much or how little, as long as it's not less than the minimum.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
And I agree 100% with that comment. What I'm stating is, as of right now, how we're doing it, we are meeting state statute.
And I can understand Councilmember Brian's point, that, that as a council meeting, if we don't have minutes from it, it would appear, to his interpretation, that we're not meeting statute, so. And, and I don't know, I guess, we call our budget meetings workshops as well, but I, I, I do remember from my initial training with the league, that there's three meetings, a regular meeting, a special meeting, and an emergency meeting. And so whether it's a budget meeting or a workshop meeting or a committee meeting, there's, there's meetings or, if there's meetings, there should be some situation, so. Any other comments here? All right. And I will recommend we move on to H. Clarification of City Code 1-3, and 1-1-3, and -4.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Uh, when I was reviewing the city policies and city code, I noticed that there were some, uh, ordinances that were passed but were not updated in the city code. Going through the city code, I noticed that if there were any ordinances made, as I understand it, any ordinances changing that would change city code, that they should be immediately codified and the, the code republished. And it was more a point of inquiry as far as, I just wanted to make sure that I had a copy of the latest city code and, so that there are changes, there are currently are changes that have not been, uh, published in the current city code. So this was, uh, I, I wanted to bring this to the council's attention and requesting that the code be updated and republished.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benj.
Councilman Brian, so what's this going to cost and, and who's going to do it, and do we have any, and where's the money going to come from to pay for this? Because we didn't have anything in the budget for updating or codification.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Councilmember Benj, as far as I understand it, we, we can, uh, we can look at having, having staff update the code and codify things as needed and then republish.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Can I get a clarification on who is staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I would, I would see that we could have the, the city clerk and/or deputy clerk take a look at, uh, re-codifying and publishing. There are, there are ordinances going, at least going back to late fall of 2015 that have not been integrated into current code.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
You know, and I guess I have, you know, no objections on, on getting that done, I just want to make sure that we're, we're having the right people do it and the right person do it. Obviously, nothing against internal staff and, but based on the information we got from Planner Stockman and what it takes and to basically dot all the i's and cross all the t's, I don't know if they have that experience to do that. So I guess, you know, if we truly do decide to do that, I think, you know, she's given us a couple of different costs of what that possibly could do, or, you know, depending on whom, whom did it. But I would rather see her do it if we truly decide to have that done. And again, I'm not disputing it not being done, it should be done. But again, if, if that's the plan to have her do it, where do we, where are we going to get the funds from?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benj.
Yeah, I agree, I'd like to see it up to, uh, the codes brought up to date, but, uh, from, I read from Liz's letter, we don't have the software to do it. And, uh, and all the cities do it, they hire a company to do it, and they do it once a year, they don't do it every time the ordinance change, they don't update their, their codes. I think there needs to be some more research done on that and see what other cities are doing or how they're doing it. I just happen to listen to the old group, uh, city council meetings minutes, and I think they pay a thousand bucks a year, and they have a company that they update their, they do the codification once a year, and they give them five paper copies and one electronic copy. So that may be something worth checking into, but right now, I don't think we have the money in the budget for the software. I don't know if our internal staff has the time to do it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
I, uh, there was an email from Liz Stockman, and I don't have that in my, um, binder that I know of. And it talked about that she can train, um, Lori to do that. Um, there'd be some costs associated with Liz training Lori, but she felt that Lori could do that work. And again, I, I could probably find it on my phone, I don't have it printed.
Mr. Mayor.
So.
Councilmember, Councilmember Rayville has a bar, hang on a second.
Just to, and to get back to the email, Planner Stockman did offer that it would, could be about four to six hours of her time to show, uh, city, the staff how to do it. As far as the software, Word can, can, you can save Word documents as PDF files, um, and there is money in the budget for software. I know we, we budget software updates, and it wouldn't hurt long-term to have a copy if, if Adobe Acrobat Pro or some, whatever similar software is needed, if long-term of electri, going to an electronic format, it wouldn't hurt to have that anyway. And, and some, some of the documents, it's like the one about the, um, the pay for council members and the mayor, that should just be a copy paste into the current document, doesn't necessarily need, uh, major changes. I mean, I haven't gone through all of them, but a lot of them probably are just that, where take the old language and paste it into the existing document and re, re, it should, if, I'm assuming it's a Word doc, it should just re, repaginate as needed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benj.
I don't think it's a Word document, because she says it's a PDF, so that's why you need Adobe to, to read it and edit it. It would be nice if there was a Word document and that could be given to us, and then it would be a lot easier to edit it, to cut and paste, and then you just have to reformat the pages to make everything fit, but, but I, I would bet it's a, it's a PDF, and that's why Liz is saying you need Adobe for it.
Well, you need a, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
You need a, a, a document, a software like Adobe is one doc, one piece of software that's used to create PDFs, but then your main editing isn't done in that Adobe software. It's usually done in like a Word, and then you, you export it to a PDF.
We, we have work to have Adobe, and it's, is to edit PDFs. And you could do it, you can do some editing in Word or PDF, but you can't do it all, you need Adobe. And it's got to be Adobe Pro, and that's, you, you can do, I know, we got, uh, a license overall, but I think then it's like a hundred bucks per computer to, to have it on other computers.
And there's also open source software that doesn't cost anything, that lets you edit Adobe, Adobe documents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayville.
To Councilmember Brian's request that we get, um, our city code updated, I, I agree, the code should be updated. I'm wondering, um, if we should, um, move that we ask Cory and Liz, where, where is our information? How can it get changed? Can, let's confirm that we can train, train Lori in on it? What would we need in software? We, we've budgeted for software. What would we need for software in, in order to do that, so that when either council or planning and zoning make changes to our code, those changes can be made and be updated on our website? What, what would that take, so that we are current? There are many things, um, on our website in addition to code that are way out of date. I think that should be a focus for us, is to try to get our website up to date. But for this, uh, specific request for council action, um, if Councilmember Brian would be willing to, um, amend his request, um, that, uh, prior to updating codes and policies that we come up with, how we're going to do that, what's that going to cost? Who can do that? And that we then develop a, a procedure that going forward, it is just, okay, let's pull up this page, let's insert, take out what we took out, put in what's new, and it's updated.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
And I, I agree with Councilman Rayville, it's something that obviously we need to get done, we need to know how, how it's done, you know, and I guess an issue with, with your request for action item that I have is, we have a source for funding and there, it's not applicable, you know. I, I was, I guess I'm in the understanding that the whole point of doing this was to know exactly where funds were coming from, who was going to do it. Basically, everything was laid out, and it, it's not, you know, and there's so many open-ended questions. You know, I'd love to go back and look, you know, and why are we using PDFs? Why are we editing PDFs? To me, it just doesn't make any sense, you know. Basically, you're taking a hard copy of something and trying to edit it. Why, you know, if, if that's the case, why aren't all these codes and documents in Word? Or some word processing software where it is easy editable? And if, if it's not at that point, what would it take us to get to that point? That's what I'd like to see first, you know, but, but I agree, you know, the code should be adopted, but again, where's the money coming from and who's going to do it? And as Mary stated, moving forward or big picture, what's the best method to, you know, have this done and on a timely fashion, get it done, and be able to edit them without having to deal with the issues we do now?
Other comments? I just think Lori, you could have been home relaxing in your pajamas watching TV tonight. There you go, ooh, I threw a lot of work my way.
By the agenda, we were done 10 minutes ago.
It, it does seem, and again, I think that's the value of the workshop, you're bringing something up, and now we get a chance to discuss, you know, what's, what's a more effective way of, of bringing this together so the team is supporting it, so it doesn't feel like it's imposed? I, I think the combination of discussions here about where does the money, what's it going to cost? Where does it come from? Who's the appropriate party to do it? And, uh, and how can it get done? If, if I'm summarizing, what you're really looking for is, you want to see it get done so that a person like you, who's trying to get up to speed as a new council member, actually has accurate, timely information. And it makes sense, as you bring it up here, if these are out of place, as we said at P&amp;Z, we've got a whole bunch of books that are out of. And I think I saw in Liz's, there were 200, 225 pages to be done? And if we're that far off, yeah, we've got a lot of inaccurate or outdated information there on our website and in our policy books. So it seemed to be, you know, a timely thing, something that should be done quickly. But I think to do it so that it's done most effectively, maybe step back and let's say, okay, where, where are the funds coming from? And how do we identify between Cory and Lori and Liz? And the software to support it? How do we get that done? So maybe we take this in two steps, give them a chance to come up with, with a proposal and, and identify their concerns, and then say, okay, how do we support it? You know, is it something that we contract somebody to do? Is it something that, um, Liz's staff and our staff can combine and get done in a timely fashion? Can we, can we prioritize which things need to get in right away so that, so that those are critical, are there for P&amp;Z and us and, and on the website? So I think if we, we take this in bite-sized chunks, it might, might be more palatable to everybody. And more realistic to accomplish. That make sense? So you want to, I, I would recommend another shot at your request for council action? And, uh, and come at it again? That make sense? Any other questions on that? All right. Next one was mine, repairs to, uh, City Hall. We've got a beautiful new finish on the floor. A little concerned, we're having a bake sale in here on Saturday, and when I was in here with the, to pay the, the finishers the other day, they said, now take your shoes off, everybody in stocking feet, and I said, that isn't going to happen. But one of the things, obviously, when we got the room emptied, we noticed a number of things. We never have painted behind the safe. This wall and this wall are crumbling, and we're in desperate need of a, of a new paint job. So my request here is, uh, to take a look at, at repairing and painting the walls, repairing and painting the back hallway and the bathrooms, ordering up sand trap rugs, and, and I would also request to order, we do have to sand the steps that the staff sweep them as soon as the ice is gone, but, so we're not dragging any more gravel in here than we need to. But get sand trap rugs and have them cleaned on a regular basis. And if we're going this far, it would be reasonable to maybe take a look at our window treatments, at least our balances up there. And I would like to see, rather than bring in those old metal chairs that we use on rare occasions, to get something more equivalent of what we have here. So that when, when people are using the room, they have decent chairs to sit on with, with the proper feet, so they're not scratching up the floor anymore than they have to. And again, as I say in here, I would, I would like to see, to dress this up a little bit, we get the- we make proposals as to what comes in and where it goes. But I think even things like the tables, we, we make a rack and, and put the tables in the same spot every time. Um, once the piano gets in here, it shouldn't have to move. So, I just think this is the time, we've got the room started, let's finish it and make it look nice. I, I would even recommend, if we were painting, the old fir woodwork's a little beat up, I think, if you're gonna do it, you, you put a, a new coat of paint, a, a color paint on the wall and paint your trim white, but I would like the opportunity of at least to investigate that and, and consider moving forward if we could have a maximum dollar amount.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, in addition, um, and I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember the dollar amount, but you have, I believe, twice donated your money from the mayor's snowmobile race, and the Lions are holding it. Judy, do you remember what that dollar amount is? And that's just kind of in a, because it had to go to like a nonprofit, so that's sitting there to write them, you can check on that dollar amount.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Kind of two things, does that money have to go to a nonprofit?
Yes.
Cause I know when Mayor Schultz was, Mayor went to fire station, so I was kinda curious.
They, they had said a nonprofit, I don't know if they excluded the fire department or not, maybe they considered the fire department a nonprofit.
No, I don't think it's nonprofits, you're right.
So that, that's what I asked. Uh, secondly, um, yeah, I agree, you know, I guess I was kind of a little confused as to why this was a request for council action, being, you know, my goal would be, because with all that we should do, I think we're gonna quickly get in excess of 5,000, I think that number's gonna be low.
Okay.
Um, but, again, I, I'm all for, if, if you wanna go and find, you know, go down the list and get quotes for, you know, what we think we wanna do, I don't have any issues with that. So, but again, I, I think we'll quickly find out, and I could be wrong, but I think we're gonna find out pretty quick that 5,000's gonna be pretty low, especially if we're doing a lot of that, cause I think-
Yeah, this one's pretty nasty, babe.
Well, and I think, as soon as you start looking at, you know, both of these, they're under window areas, you're gonna run into moisture issues, and there's gonna be more underlying than what we see on the outside. You can see that, you know, all of them are moist, gonna be moisture issues, and I'm, being the building is, is old as it is, I'm gonna hate to see what they find underneath if we get that far.
I was surprised they never, ever painted behind the safe. In a long time.
I think you should paint the mural to save there. And the seniors, those think it's still there.
And they keep putting their plates on top of it. Well, and, and I thought, you know, since, since, um, I've got an interest in it, if, if the council would be all right with that, otherwise it's gonna fall back on Lori, and we're already dumping enough on her, so. So I, anyway, that's just what I thought, and, and if, if the, the number's too low, then I have to just come back and-
So at this point, it's just to get quotes?
Yeah.
On different items, not to move forward with anything at this point, it's just to get, so may, maybe it'd be better to have a list of, to submit a list of things that we want done?
Well, if there's anything in addition to what we have here.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, I, I would be willing to assist you on this.
Yep.
And work with staff also to help.
You know, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I'd like to get, obviously, if we decide to do something different, or if we're deciding to keep maps or not keep maps, obviously, ask the other committees, you know, and get their input, just, you know, I know with parking rack in years past, we definitely refer to some of them quite a bit, so they are kind of handy to have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, Councilmember Rickert's comment, that's true, parking rack does it, and planning and zoning does it, but maybe we need to get them and have them plexi, you know, put under plexiglass, so, I mean, that one looks pretty beat up there. So, whatever we put back up is still usable to the committees or residents that are here to look at something.
Yeah, do you put them in a, a box frame or a frame of something, you know, so, you know, you don't have all this excess, you just have the map.
Yeah, I noticed that, uh, when we were cleaning out to, to prep for the floors, we still had our emergency management maps up there with all the red lines on them and stuff, and they, they looked about like this, and pretty beat up and stuff, I realized that we really weren't paying much attention to those, I can understand the park maps and stuff, and so, certainly a reference, I was thinking about a number of the maps we have downstairs that we've used in meetings before, and maybe we have those stored here and they're on an easel as we're using them, because it, it does seem, that one's held up pretty good, the rest of these get beat up, and that one's partly behind the piano, so. But yes, we can, we can make recommendations and, um... All right, anything else on that? And then, and that last item is to work with the seniors, the Lions, the church, only put things in here that are really necessary for the room, since this is a public space, and, you know, an empty carpeted box is probably not necessary to-
Is that, do we find-
One, one of them is empty and the other one has their sound system.
Okay.
But I think, you know, you know, if we need more chairs, we can store some downstairs for the occasional group that needs them, but I think we can have people sit up here, let's get them comfortable chairs, but. And I know that the flooring people were concerned about the casters on these, because they're hard plastic, they would like us to see go to the soft ones like on the podium there, something that's less likely when kids are racing them across the floor to, to do damage.